Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for May 16th, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, did you hear that? Everybody said it just together. It was nice. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler. Councilmember Armstrong. Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Two absent, Geisler and Armstrong.
Thank you. Why don't we start by adopting this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Novak to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are right up to the very first thing, which is always amazing. An oath of office for a new police officer. Captain Bill Steiner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my honor and privilege to get to introduce one of our newest officers to the council and staff and the community in general. Officer Robert Tommers is here next to me, or Robbie as we know him. I don't think anybody calls him Robert around here. A little bit about Robbie is he was raised in East Bethel, graduated from high school in 2018 from Andover High School. He attended North Hennepin Community College and got his Associate's of Arts degrees, and then furthered his education at the University of Minnesota where he obtained a degree in sociology of law, criminology, and justice. Robbie took a job with the Columbia Heights Police Department as a CSO and was there until early 2022 when he came to Coon Rapids Police Department to be a CSO. Didn't take long for us to recognize Robbie's talents and he got hired in October of 2022 as a full-time police officer here. Robbie has an interesting family of public service, actually. Robbie's father is a retired Brooklyn Center Police Officer. His mother is a retired Minneapolis firefighter, and his sister Shelby back here is a Columbia Heights Police Officer. I understand we have some youngers that are finding their, seeking their education, and some olders that are attorneys, but, you know, they get all the attention, right? I'm just kidding. Robbie has been successfully completed this field training process, tested pretty rigorously for three or four months, and has earned his right to be a Coon Rapids Police Officer. Short time, I'm sorry, his training badge has been removed, and in a short time, his father David Tommers will come up and pin him with badge number 190. Robbie, badge 190 is yours. Nobody's ever worn it before here, and nobody will ever wear it again. It'll always be yours. To wear it, we ask that you wear it proudly because you've earned it. We also ask that you never forget that this badge has been entrusted to you, but it really belongs to the citizens of Coon Rapids. To wear it, we ask that you always strive to embody our core values of professionalism, trust, and compassion, and you do that because that's what we consider the Coon Rapids way. Just as we ask a commitment from you to wear our badge, we also recognize that it requires a commitment from us. The officers on this department and all members of the police department commit to you that we're also going to provide you with the guidance, the training, the equipment, to make sure that you have a safe, full, and productive career. We want you to know that we all take that commitment very seriously. Is that a deal?
Sounds good.
Okay, good. With that, I'd like to ask Robbie's father, David Tommers, to come up. Have you moved towards the center here? And he's going to pin your new badge, your numbered badge 190, on you, after which we'll ask Mayor Cook to come and administer the oath of office.
All right, there you go. Now listen closely.
Tombers.
Tombers. All right. If you would raise your right hand, there you go, and repeat after me. I, Robert Tombers.
I, Robert Tombers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka and state of Minnesota.
And the county of Anoka and state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
And just like a fire drill, there they all go. Neat, orderly, but they're gone. All right, well, almost as much fun. We have our poppy day proclamations for American Legion Post 334 and the auxiliary, and a poppy day proclamation for the VFW Post 9625 and auxiliary. Are we gonna, you wanna come up? All right. Make sure I've got the right ones here. I'll meet you out front.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are we doing?
Good.
Good. And will it be okay to read them both together?
Yes.
Okay. They're word for word, except for the first paragraph, so we'll do, we'll do both. Okay.
Yes, you have. And we appreciate it.
Catch the rest of you guys later. I stopped and missed stream here.
Yeah, well, we're actually going to do the proclamations, and what I've learned is, what I've learned is that if I read a bunch of stuff from the description, most of it's already in the proclamation. So we're going to start with these. All right. Whereas the Coon Rapids Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9625 and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol. And whereas the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol, and whereas the memorial poppy assembled by disabled veterans pays respectful tribute to those killed in war and also benefits the living veterans and their families. And whereas public donations for poppies fund rehabilitation programs within each local community that benefit veterans, their families, and ultimately our state and nation. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim May 26th, 2023 to be Poppy Day, urging all citizens of Coon Rapids to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. It almost feels like an understatement when you just read it, but yes, so we're very thankful. And who would like to maybe talk about anything we're doing here, where you're gonna be?
We will be, yeah, I'm Diane Bowman. I'm the poppy chairman for the Coon Rapids American Legion and for the 10th District American Auxiliary. We will be at Cub Foods on Hanson and Northdale this Friday and Saturday, and let's see, what else? Oh.
You wanna tell about Memorial?
Oh, yep, and just as long as we're going for the memorial services, we, for the Anoka County Veterans Council is hosting the memorial services at Morningside. And then this year, we are not going to be at the Veterans Memorial Bunker. We're going to be at the Activity Center. There's, yep, so we'll be at the Activity Center this year because there's some changes with the shelters out there. We wanted to make sure that we had a spot for the picnic. So we encourage everybody in the community to come out and, and celebrate the veterans and come and see one of the services, if not both. They are a little different, different speakers at each one, but we would really love it if you guys could come out and support the community. It's for Anoka County, so come on out.
What time is the Morningside one, and what time is the one?
Yep, that's a good question. So it'd be on the 27th, the weekend of Memorial, Memorial Day weekend.
Saturday.
Saturday, 27th, and Morningside 10 o'clock, and then 11:30 at the Activity Center this year. Okay, and I am Ann Stefan. I'm the president of the Coon Rapids American Legion Auxiliary 334 and also the secretary for the Anoka County Veterans Council. So we're supporting our veterans all over the community because we so love what they do, and we wouldn't be here talking to you if it wasn't for them. So there you go. Thanks, Shane, for your service.
I'm Shane Fields, the commander of the VFW.
That was brief. Yeah. Phone calls from you go a lot longer. So I just encourage folks to support the poppies. It's just, and it's donations. And, and to come out to Morningside on the 27th. It's a beautiful, beautiful memorial service, and to see, to see the veterans out there that are there, the ones that are in the, that you can tell they've, they've served. So, and we're just.
It's a great family. It really is a great family event to have everybody out. It's something that I actually hadn't ever done till after my kids were older, and I said, wow, I really wish my kids would have been to that younger. I thought it would have been something really good for them to do.
And I think on, on Memorial Day, we will be at Epiphany in the cemetery, Joyce Chapel, and then back over at the Coon Rapids VFW.
Well, something quick to mention, too, as long as you're throwing the mic back to Jerry here. Yeah. Well, so we talked about the service, so not just the kids, but there will be Boy Scouts out there supporting this. They hold an amazing flag, the huge flag out there, Papa Bear's out there, and then the Sea Cadets from Cambridge, they come out as well, and then the Pooleys. So we have up-and-coming military, really. So it's a beautiful opportunity for people to come out and just support the veterans in the community. I mean, we have an amazing county. So come on out.
Thank you very much. Here are the proclamations. Shane, thank you. Are we back on like COVID protocols or something, or why is Councilmember Carlson so far away?
I had my shot to move, Mr. Mayor. Didn't take it.
All right. We are up to the National Public Works Week proclamation. All right. Since 1960, the American Public Works Association, the APWA, has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, more than 30,000 members in the United States and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating the infrastructure within our local communities. This year's theme, connecting the world through public works, and I have a feeling this is all going to be in the proclamation, isn't it? Yeah, the city clerk is smiling. Yes. Okay, but I'll finish it. Highlights the way public works professionals connect us physically, through infrastructure, and inspirationally through service to their communities, whether as first responders or daily workers carrying out their duties with pride. Public works is a thread that connects us all, no matter where we live in the world. Let's just read the proclamation here. Are we gonna have Mr. Hammer come up, or is he good just sitting there, and I'll just read it to him?
I'm good sitting here.
I thought you were. All right. Proclamation for Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Coon Rapids. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders responsible for rebuilding, improving, and maintaining our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders in the city of Coon Rapids to gain knowledge and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their community. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the city of Coon Rapids, and urge our citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities and events designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life, proclaimed the 16th day of May, 2023. Mr. Hammer, do we have a, do we have an event coming up, too?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this Saturday, the 20th, is the Public Works Open House from 10 until noon over at the Public Works Facility on 111th Avenue. We will be there, play in the equipment, take a look around, demos, answering questions. It's really about educating and providing information on the services that we provide. So the group does a great job. Unfortunately, I can't get them here at night because they work so hard during the day, and then they gotta be back early in the morning. But I wish we could get more in here for this because I sit here all the time. You don't get to see the 60-some other people out there that do the masses of the work. So it's really about them and not about Mr. Hammer sitting here today. So, thank you.
But every time we turn on a tap and have clean water, or flush a toilet, and everything goes the way that's supposed to, or the streets are plowed, or the parks are mowed or cared for, we know the public works guys, the public works folks are out there working, and we're very appreciative. And I just encourage everyone to go to that open house. You know, if you've got kids or grandkids, awesome, bring them because they'll be totally impressed with the equipment. But even if you don't, you, as a taxpayer, will be impressed with what you've purchased and what's working around the city and what we need to keep a city going. You know, you got 23 square miles and 63,000 residents and, what, 48 parks, and you know, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of things to maintain.
And you look at the facility from the road, it doesn't look very big. It just keeps going. There's lots of stuff in there, and every time people look and say, I had no idea this was here, and I always just say thank you because, but for them, that wouldn't exist.
It's like Warehouse 51. It just keeps going and going. All right. Anything else to add on that? If not, we will consider that proclaimed and thank our public works folks, and remind folks the open house, Saturday, May 20th, from 10 a.m. to noon, and that's the Public Works Garage right over on 111th, next to the ever-popular recycling center. All right. Item five is to approve the minutes for this evening's meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 2nd meeting.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we have six items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one, this is fun, is to announce our 2023 summer concert schedule. These are the concerts, the Thursday nights, Live at the Dam, and this is sponsored by Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation and Anoka County, which means they let you into the park for free that night. June 1st, we have the Red Letter Band, which is country. June 8th, Ecuador Monta, which is Latin fusion. June 15th, Gypsy Mania Hot Club Quartet, which is jazz. June 22nd, The Rockin' All-Stars, 1950s style of music. June 29th, The New Riverside Ramblers, which is Cajun. The July 13th, The High 48s, which is bluegrass. July 20th, The Naked Cowboys, country. July 27th, Jonah and the Whales, which is rock, pop, and country. And then August 3rd, to finish out the season, is The Revolution Five, which is a Beatles tribute band. And these will all come out in the quarterly newsletter next month, but it might come out after the first concert. So you're gonna want to get that June 1st one in your calendar for sure. All performances begin at 7 p.m. at the Performance Pavilion at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park, and the concerts are offered at no charge to the community. Parking fees are waived for the night, and the Arts Commission would like to recognize the assistance of the Anoka County Parks and Recreation Department Rangers and other staff in presenting this series. A local Boy Scout troop will sell popcorn, candy, soda, and water during the concerts. The North Star Lions Club will be selling food items such as hamburgers, hot dogs, and brats. In addition to being available at City Hall, the 2023 schedule has been distributed via utility bill mailings and will be in the city newsletter and on the website. The Arts Commission appreciates the opportunity to continue presenting this series to the community. Bring lawn chairs or a blanket. It's really a good night. Item, and I promise the rest of them won't take that long. Okay. Item seven on our agenda, which is the second one on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-64, accepting Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $11,200. Council is, we're asked to accept the donation from the Community Strength Foundation for use in the 2023 Thursday Nights Live at the Dam Concert Series, Summer Concert Series. Community Strength Foundation has graciously donated $11,200 to offset costs for the 2023 Summer Concert Series. So we're going to adopt Resolution 23-64, accepting the donation of $11,200 from the Community Strength Foundation for use in the 2023 Summer Concert Series. Item eight, which is the third on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-62, accepting a donation to the police department. Federal Cartridge Company made a donation of $1,000 for the K-9 unit of the police department. The city council is required to accept financial donations, and we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-62, accepting a donation to the police department, and I thought I had the information on that. Didn't, it's towards a K-9 unit. Was it for something in particular, or is that a different unit, or is that a different item?
There's two items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
The donation from Federal is something they actually initiated through some sales of calendars, K-9 police calendars, that they divided amongst multiple agencies, and it's just a $1,000 general donation for the many expenses that the dogs come up with on a pretty regular basis, so.
All right, very good. So I think I said that we'll be adopting Resolution 23-62, accepting the donation to the police department. So item nine, which is the fourth on the consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-63, accepting a donation to the police department, and this is to accept the donation from the Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association. The Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association made a donation of $3,479 toward the purchase of a K-9 protective vest for the police department. There it is. The city council is required to accept financial donations by resolution per state statute, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-63, accepting a donation to the police department, and offer a thanks to the Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association. And item 10, which is our fifth item on the consent agenda, is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to Coon Rapids North Star Lions for the Dudley Softball Tournament. The appropriate fees have been paid. The certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, and the background investigation has been completed and approved by the police department. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8 a.m. to midnight from June 16th, 17th, and 18th, 2023. So we're looking to approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Lions for the Dudley Softball Tournament from June 16th through 18th, 2023. And the 11th, and the sixth item on our consent agenda, item 11, and our final item on the consent agenda, is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license for the 4th of July community celebration to Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. The appropriate fees have been paid. The certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, and the background investigation has been completed and approved by the police department. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8 a.m. to midnight from July 2nd through July 4th, 2023. So we're looking to approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation for use at the 4th of July community celebration from July 2nd through July 4th, 2023. And that is our consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion or questions from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is, we're to hold a public hearing for a grant application for the United States Department of Justice and consider a memorandum of understanding with Anoka County. Captain Steiner, would you like me to read this, or do you want to hit the highlights? Your choice.
I think I can hit the highlights, if that's easier.
Okay.
Every year, we apply for the JAG grant. It's issued by the U.S. Department of Justice, and we're able to use it to primarily purchase equipment and things of need, which differs from year to year. This year, there's several items. The awarded, the awarded grant was $26,175, and, or I'm sorry, it was $25,324. We were able to acquire a Throwbot 2, which is a portable robot that you can throw into a active crime scene, maneuvers around, takes pictures, takes live video and streams it back. You can communicate with people in there. It's not weaponized or anything like that.
I haven't even considered that.
No.
Thank you.
Sometimes people have concerns about that. It is, it is a communication device and a live streaming device. It enhances the safety of officers when they're encountering a barricaded suspect or something of that nature, and we have used those in the city, other people's equipment in the past. Two preliminary breath testing devices for DWI enforcement. I think most people know what those are. This is an interesting one, a mobile fingerprint identification system that we used to call the IBIS, and I don't even know what IBIS stood for, but that's what we always called it. And this is a tool that allows us to identify somebody that may be less than cooperative out on the street by, by taking a real-time fingerprint and connecting to databases. That'll give us that information and help identify people. 30 stopstick piranhas, which are, a lot of people know what the stopsticks are. These are single, smaller units that you slide right underneath somebody's tire, and we started using those with our Investigations Division with the rise in auto thefts that we've had. So if we do find a vehicle that is stolen, and we can get in there and slip this under their tires to prevent pursuits before they start is the goal. We had some deployments of that when we had them in our investigators' cars, and we thought it was a good use to put them in all the vehicles. The more pursuits we can avoid, the better. And the last one, which is kind of a unique little thing that we thought we'd try, are shatterballs. Shatterballs are little spherical metal balls with points on them that break glass. So if you've, many times in my career, I've taken a heavy flashlight when we used to carry big flashlights or an ASP, and railed or an ASP, and railed on car windows to shatter and, and get people out or extricate people. These are an underhand toss with a little ball with points on it that takes care of it just like that. So we'll be putting those in the cars to help, uh, gain entry into a vehicle for an accident scene or, or any type of reason why we might need to get in where we don't want to spend a lot of time railing on a window with a blunt object. So those are some of the things that we're purchasing this year. The grant covered almost all of it. $851 short that will, that will take in through some of our other, um, money that's allocated to us in the budget.
I would have thought that Throwbot would have been most of that grant. That's surprisingly affordable.
It is, and, and surprisingly durable, too. They, they, they're pretty impressive. Uh, once we get it, uh, to stop down and take a look, it's a pretty, it's a pretty unique piece of equipment, so.
Yeah, as long as it's not weaponized, bring it in here, show it to us.
Will do.
They get all the cool stuff after you retire, Carlson. Do you notice that?
All right. Does anybody have any questions of Captain Steiner? If not, we're gonna have to, we're gonna open a public hearing on this. So if there's no questions, then we'll open the public hearing on the proposed JAG grant expenditures. Does anybody want to address counsel on the, uh, the JAG grant expenditures? This is the public hearing. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And, uh, as long as no changes to the grant were proposed, we're gonna move into entering into an MOU. Is that the same one, right? Yeah. 12, 13, yeah, so 12. So we just need a motion to enter into a motion of understanding. Councilmember Carlson, thank you for getting me out of this.
Make a motion to approve entering into an MOU with Anoka County and the grant from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Ray Rower. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia.
I'm just curious, I have a question, uh, might be for Mr. Brody or for Captain Steiner, but I'm wondering why do we have, why are we entering into an MOU with, uh, the City of Fridley on this? If no funds are being used in the City of Fridley, I'm just wondering why they're even noted.
Captain Steiner?
Well, and I wish, uh, Captain Jacobson was gonna be here, but he, he's our grant writer, but he, uh, he's at the MAC meeting tonight that's in conjunction with the Transformative Circle offsite. The reasoning behind it, I'm not, I don't know if I can give you the, uh, an accurate version, and I don't want to speculate. However, um, Fridley, uh, has entered into this before with us and opted not to, to spend any of the money. There's some, there's some things when you enter into a grant with the federal government, some tracking and things like that, and they, they opted not to take a cut of it, basically. And I don't know if we enter into it with them, and it looks like Mr. Stemwell might have more light to shed on that.
I'm just wondering how long he's gonna let you float.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, council, that, that, we've asked that question before, too, and I don't think we've ever got quite a satisfactory answer, but it does have to do with Fridley not pursuing their grant. And then, for whatever reason, that makes us eligible for their share of the grant. We have to enter into this MOU to sort of get their share of the grant.
Oh, see.
Which is good news for us, and that's happened, I think, two or three years in a row. Uh, for some reason, the JAG grant is set up that way, and we're like linked with Fridley. Uh, fine, as long as they don't want their money, and we'll take advantage of it, so.
Okay, well, works for us.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And we're on to item 13, Consider Planning Case 23-8. Consider adoption of ordinance 2283, rezoning Cedarwood 9730 University Avenue. Dakota, were you watching our council meeting in your office? Somebody just popped in.
Oh, yeah, no, I've just been kinda hanging out on the side, so we're ready here.
Mr. Stemwell, what did I forget?
And council, if we could, uh, Mr. Brody's got an update on, given that we only have five council members tonight, there's a little bit of a nuance to the code then.
Oh, all right.
And I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Grisgovia, just popping it into my mind. He asked whether we needed a supermajority, and we do not need a supermajority for a zoning amendment change. However, I did, like I said, it kinda triggered mine to at least take a look. And what we do need is a majority of the members of the council, not the members that are present, but the members of the council. So we have a seven-member council. We would need a four-person approval of it. So not typically, when we only have five members, we just need three people to approve something. Uh, most of the items that we have on our agenda tonight. But in this particular matter, we're gonna need four council members to approve a zoning change, um, which represents a majority of the council. So I leave it up to the council what it, what it wants to do tonight, um, given that we only have five members, given that it might be an issue that there's not a complete agreement on. So I'd probably defer to you guys on that particular piece, or Mr. Stemwell, but I just wanted to point that out before we get too far in the presentation. And, uh, I know there's another agenda item on your, on tonight's agenda that's related as well.
Okay, interesting. So do we want to move ahead with this, or do we want to table this until we have a full council? That's really the question, right?
Yeah, that would be the question I would suggest that be, that be thought about at least. Given that.
I'm not sure how we go about deciding that, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
I, I believe that we should wait until we have a full council. So I'd be willing to make a motion to do that.
Okay.
Table this until the next council meeting.
Hold that until we have just a little more discussion, because as soon as we have that table motion, we can't discuss it. So does anybody else have anything that they would care to add? Do they act on it tonight or table it? Mr. Stemwell, you got your hand up?
Mayor, council, if I could just confirm with planning staff that we would be, if we move this out to the first meeting in June, within our statutory timelines for approval? Yes?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that 60-day has already been extended, so I think we have, um, I believe until July 5th is our statutory date.
Thank you.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Councilman Novak?
Personally, I don't have any issue myself, but if there are other issues that the members want to discuss, then I definitely think we should hold off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that this was not unanimous, and it might make sense to have the whole council here to have the conversation and the vote. So, Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table this discussion, uh, to the next council meeting, which is June.
Date? 8th?
June 6th.
Make a motion that we table this discussion until the June 6th council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Carlson and a second by Novak to table this item to June 6th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Thanks, Dakota. So we should just go ahead and probably table that next one, too, then.
Mayor, council, I would have given.
Councilmember Carlson? Were you up?
All right. Do we know what we'll have as far as council members on the next meeting?
Well, it, it could be, but it's, this is really unusual for us to not have seven. I mean, we might be missing one once in a while, but, um, we, we knew one was gonna be gone, and the other one just became ill today. So this is really unusual for us. Or you want somebody else to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
In, uh, this would be. Considering, um, 23-9, I make a motion that we table the discussion, um, on whether or not to approve the use of durable engineered wood product for the proposed Cedarwood Development at 9730 University Avenue Northwest. I make a motion, we table that discussion to, until the June 6th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Grisgovia. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
I think it's, to be, to be fair to you, I think that, yeah.
Yep.
We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, item 15 is to consider Resolution 23-65 and 23-66, approving miscellaneous 2023-1 appealed assessment levy. Ms. Hanson, you got any kind of an update, or?
Uh, yes, so for your consideration, I was, uh, to approve the assessment levy for the miscellaneous 2023-1 appealed. The objections were heard by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals on May 4th, and they brought forward the recommendations included in the memo. We have since that time received one payment, so the amount's been reduced to $4,510.68. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm sorry, Ashley, could you repeat that amount again? Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody have any questions on this? Council adopting, let's see, yeah, we need to adopt. Councilmember Ray Rower, thank you.
I make a motion to adopt Resolutions 23-65 and 23-66, adopting 2023 Sub 1 Miscellaneous Special Assessments.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Grisgovia. Do you, do you need that contested miscellaneous assessments, one-year and three-year, in the motion? I think they were in there.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And I would like to say, before we vote on this, a big thank you to our Board of Adjustment and Appeals, who does the yeoman work, um, hearing these appeals and spending time making sure they listen to everyone, and they do a, just a great job. And we appreciate all of their work on this. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 16 is to consider agreement and budget amendment for purchase of a new enterprise resource planning ERP system. And this is a software system, and I have never paid this much for a software system. Wow. Ms. Hanson, do you want to talk about it, or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, for your consideration, would be approval of purchase of a new, uh, software system to replace our existing, uh, software. So this would be for finance, utility billing, and re, human resource functions. And we've currently been using our legacy systems for about 20 years, um, through the local government consortium Logis. They have opted to move to a new software solution. Um, and we were provided a proposal to make that happen. We decided to look at our other options and then got, um, proposals and reviewed demos from some other software solutions that specialize in government software. And ultimately have identified BSNA as the recommended, uh, vendor to move forward with. Um, they're very reputable, have great customer sor, uh, customer support, and, um, really would be a good value for the city. Overall, we should have a return on investment within three years of switching to this. Uh, it takes approximately 18 months to implement. And Logis has identified that they will discontinue supporting JD Edwards beginning of 2025. Um, so we're asking approval to enter into the agreement and as well as amend the general fund and utility fund budgets for the first installment payment that would be due this year. Um, the other two payments will be included in the 2024 budget and would be based on actual costs. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Hanson for doing all that research into the systems and, um, you know, comparing costs, but not just cost, but also service and quality. And it was one of those times where you're looking at the numbers, hoping that the recommended one is also the one that's, um, cost-effective, and in this case it is. So it's got, um, good reviews and so on. So, uh, with that, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a new enterprise resource planning system and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the software as a service agreement with BSNA for this project and adopt Resolution 23-69, amending the 2023 general fund and utility fund budgets.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia.
Just a comment, because we talked about this in a work session, and we started looking at these numbers, and they were really high. They were in the multiple millions of dollars, and we were all kinda taken back on that. And I think, uh, Ms., you know, Ashley has done an excellent job finding this product, making sure it's gonna be the right product. It's a savings for the community in, in, in the millions of dollars. So, um, I wholeheartedly agree with this and look forward to the implementation.
Yeah, just, just for the, for the edification, um, the one we're going with is, uh, is, uh, $1.6 million.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years. And the other two are $2.5 million and $4.6 million. So it's, um, it's expensive software. Do we still have the, do we still have the old Windows XP to run the old one, the old program?
Yeah, it's on DOS, I think, but.
Mr. Stemwell, it's on DOS.
I think it goes that far back. Mayor and council, and I should mention, as, as Ashley did, that it, this will actually save us money relative to the system we're using today. So not only the prospective or potential software systems we could have gone with, but today. And part of that has to do with the relationship we have with Logis and the service they provide, and that part going away. But this is an all-around win for the city in that it's gonna be a much better product for us and frankly, the community, as they're sort of the, you know, downstream users of it. But also from the financial standpoint, just makes all the sense in the world.
Excellent. Any other discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 17, uh, come on, 17. Consider Resolution 23-68, providing for the sale of $10 million general obligation improvement in utility revenue bonds, Series 2023A. I don't see Nick here. Do we have somebody here?
We're not to that part of the bond sale yet.
No, no?
Mayor and council, but Ashley can kinda give you a preview of what's to come.
All right, okay, very good. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. We're proposing sale, uh, or issuing a bond of, um, $10 million, up to $10 million, uh, to be sold on June 20th of 2023. Uh, this would be to finance street reconstruction and water improvement projects, including, um, util, larger utility reconstruction project within the city as well as construction of the new water tower. The bond issue is proposed to be sized as $2.7 million in improvement bond portion. This would be paid back with a combination of special assessments and a tax levy over 10 years. Uh, the other portion is a $7.2 million water revenue bond, paid for over 15 years with, uh, water utility revenue. And all we're asking for is approval to set the sale date and move forward with the sale and adopt Resolution 23-68. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Anybody have any questions on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak?
I move, we recommend Resolution 23-68, providing the sale for $10 million in general obligation improvement and utility revenue bonds, Series 2023A.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Carlson for Resolution 23-68. Is there any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And this is probably a good time to remind folks that these don't just happen without a lot of conversation and workshops. You know, so we didn't just go out for a $10 million bond without really digging into it, so. Now we're just gonna hope for a good interest rate.
That's right.
We hope Smiling Nick comes in and goes, hey, we nailed it, yeah. All right, 18. Consider Resolution 23-67, granting preliminary approval for conduit bond financing Mississippi View Apartments. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. I can give you a quick overview of this project. So this relates to the Mississippi View Apartments, which are located on Mississippi Boulevard just south of Anoka Ramsey Community College. Uh, that's a 96-unit apartment complex built in, uh, 1972. Um, most recently, it had been renovated in 2007, currently owned by Dominion, which is based here in the Twin Cities. A, a Seattle-based company, Vitus, is proposing to purchase the complex as well as rehab it. As part of that, um, several public financing sources will be going into that purchase and rehab, and that's why you're asked tonight to consider this resolution, uh, related to conduit revenue bonds. So just a little bit of an overview of the project itself. The total acquisition and rehab budget is estimated right around $29 million. The rehab component of that amounts to over $50,000 per unit. So that would include, um, roofing, um, gutters and downspouts, uh, new windows. As to the units themselves, it would include new flooring, kitchen cabinets, um, throughout the unit, units, as well as some mechanical analytics. the units, as well as some mechanical and electrical upgrades. The work would be done with minimal disruption to the existing tenants. I will note that ninety-three of the ninety-six units in this building are under a Section Eight contract, so I know there's been a lot of discussion about how rent increases work for various income restricted buildings recently. This because most of those units are Section Eight units, people who are receiving Section Eight just, you know, simply pay a percentage of their income for rent, so if their income really isn't going up, their rent isn't going to go up, so it works differently than some of the other straight tax credit finance projects. So Vitus is proposing to apply to the state in the coming weeks for an allocation of four percent tax credits, as well as these bonds. The city would be the issuer of the bonds, but as with other types of conduit financing, the city is under no obligation to pay the bonds, it really doesn't have much of an impact on the city, it's just the way the financing works, it's done in a conduit capacity. So tonight you're asked to simply consider preliminary resolution authorizing the bond application, provided the buyer is awarded the tax credits by the state this summer, you would be asked to further consider the project at that point. Currently, their closing is expected to happen in about October. We do believe, since there are a large number of Section Eight units as part of this, it would be an attractive application to the state, so we feel it's likely that they would that they would receive this award. So I can answer any questions, we do have a representative here from Vitus, if you have any questions specific to him, but otherwise, you're asked to consider this resolution.
Very good. I would love it if you came up to the AMBO for just a second.
Yeah, of course.
I had never heard of Vitus, so of course I did my research, and it's a pretty impressive company, they've been around, based out of Seattle, they've been around since nineteen-ninety-three, and I'm curious, do you, are you based here, or are you based out of Seattle then?
I'm based out of Seattle, so I flew out this morning.
Okay, all right, because that office that you guys just renovated in the Belltown neighborhood of Seattle?
Mm-hmm.
We would love to have that project here. Even though we don't have a nineteen-twenty-five building to rebuild, that is a cool project. If you ever get a chance to look at that, they really did some remarkable things. You feeling good about this?
Yeah, yes, we, you know, Vitus is a, we're particularly focused in the Section Eight space, we are an only acquisition rehab developer, so we don't do any ground-up development. We focus specifically on properties that have a component of Section Eight, usually, you know, somewhere upwards of fifty percent. This project is a great example of the typical project that we would, you know, invest in and want to preserve for the existing tenant base. And yeah, I mean, the project is in good condition for being built in nineteen-seventy-two. Like most of these projects that we see, it just needs a little bit of love. This state is very receptive to preservation deals, as Matt mentioned, there is a priority focus on at-risk and preservation projects within the bond allocation space in the state pool, so we are very confident that when we go to the state, hopefully with the city's blessing, that we would receive said allocation and that we could begin work, as Matt mentioned, in October of this year. Renovation's expected to take around ten months, and then we would have, you know, a newly renovated space for these tenants that would hopefully be preserved for, you know, thirty-plus years and beyond, so.
You got sixteen years out of the last big remodel, right? Two thousand seven? Yeah, but, so you flew all the way from Seattle, what questions did you anticipate from us? Because I'm sure we're missing it.
Of course, yeah. Well, Matt had mentioned that there are a lot of focus around the rent raising, as, you know, as a part of the Section Eight component of the property, tenants are only required to pay thirty percent of their income. There will be a portion of the rent that is increased, obviously that will be covered by the gap between that thirty percent and the actual agreed-upon HAP contract rents with HUD and MHFA as the contract administrator here. The other big one is usually relocation is a very large kind of point of focus for these, so temporary relocation during the rehab, as well as permanent relocation of residents, if any planned, cut that second one off. We don't, we don't plan to permanently remove anybody from this project, you know, we pride ourselves on coming into properties and really focusing on renovating the space for the existing tenants, rather than trying to, you know, build out a new tenant base and lease up units with new residents. There will be a component of temporary relocation at this project, there are five planned units that will receive ADA renovations, so the scope of work there is a little bit more invasive than a typical unit remodel. Usually you have to widen walls and kind of really get into the grid of the unit itself, so those residents will be put up at the developer's expense within an extended stay hotel for the duration of their renovation. We like to make sure that residents have, you know, the availability to cook, and that they have all the comforts of their own apartment while they're away from the project, and if any transportation or other services are required, we build those into the budget as well, and that includes moving and storage expenses for resident belongings while they're out of their space. In addition, residents that are on the site will have a small temporary relocation, or a onsite relocation, which is just that they would need to be out of their units from about eight till five during the day to, you know, not be accosted by construction debris, and just to make sure that the renovation goes smoothly, and so when we run into scheduling conflicts in those scenarios, we provide a space for residents to go during the day, either in a vacant unit, the community space onsite, this one does not have a community space, so we would outfit a vacant unit with, you know, amenities, TV, internet, cooking utensils, so that residents could come in, use that space while they're out of their unit during the day, and then when they go back to their unit at night, they'll always have a fully operable kitchen, bathroom, so that they can live in the space while the renovation's taking place. And those renovations for the typical units are expected to take about five business days, so pretty limited scope of work there in terms of keeping the residents out of their units.
See, those were really good answers to questions that I wouldn't have thought to ask. Anybody have any questions? What was your name again, I'm sorry?
My name's Evan Laws, and I'm a development manager for Vitus.
Evan Laws?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Laws while he's up here?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
So, Mr. Laws, I just, in listening to this, I appreciate a couple of things, I appreciate that they will be displaced, that the renovation is happening, they're still living there. I'm also appreciative of Section Eight housing and the fact that it's based on salary versus getting money to build and then rents do increase, so, yeah, I, it all sounds good to me so far.
Was there a question in there somewhere?
No. Just comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Will you be touching the siding at all?
We will, yeah.
Okay.
I believe there will be, I mean, I have the scope.
Oh, the siding is great, that'd be two thousand seven siding, I thought that was great, but you're going to freshen that up again?
Yeah, usually that's in our scope, and I was just out at the property, actually, this last week, I don't know where I misplaced the actual scope of work, but yes, I do believe siding, full siding replacement is a part of the, a part of the proposed scope of work. The building envelope is obviously a very important focus of ours when we do these renovations, especially in climates that have, you know, a harsher winter, such as Minnesota, so.
I don't know everything that was done in two thousand seven, but that freshen-up really made a big change with those buildings, and so I really appreciate whatever you have going on in there as well.
Very good.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak?
Just to follow in Councilmember Ray Row's footsteps there with a remark, I just want to say that I grew up about a block away from those apartments, and a lot of my childhood friends still have parents that live in those apartments, so when I saw this on the agenda, I was very happy to see that those apartments aren't going to get a refresh, so thank you very much.
Of course, yeah. That was half of my paper route as a kid.
Not bad.
So, Mr. Laws, would it be possible for you to send the scope of work to Matt, just so he can send it out to council, so we kind of know what the scope of work is?
Yes, of course.
Okay, awesome. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Laws?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
More on the city's acting as the conduit for the revenue bonds, can you explain that a little bit for us?
Yeah, so Matt might be able to touch on this a little bit more, but as I understand it, it's basically a checkbox of the program, so in connection with the four percent tax credits that we are applying to from the state agency, the tax-exempt bonds are, you know, a partnership with that, and as a agency of the state that has allocated a cap of these bonds, the city has to basically sign off to the project as the jurisdiction that is approving the deal, so. It's more of a, you know, an approval, as Matt mentioned, there's no financial obligation of the bonds to the city itself, the borrower is who is responsible for repaying the bonds as a part of the project.
That makes, that makes more sense for me, and I understand, yeah, that like, this conduit facet, even though we're kind of acting in that capacity, it doesn't, we're not responsible for the twenty-nine million dollar debt, it doesn't affect our bond rating that we're going to have to, you know, be facing here in the next couple of weeks, so thanks for that clarification.
What it can impact is you can only have a certain amount of this in a year, correct? Because I recall a year that, when the Epiphany Pines were redone, I think it was, they had to go over to Champlin, Champlin signed off on their municipal bond, because I think we'd already capped out because of some other projects.
That makes sense.
Does that ring a bell?
Mayor and council, I believe that's correct, I know there have been projects that have come through, occasionally we get asked as a community to be the conduit financer for some other community, in those cases, cities charge some sort of administrative fee to make that work, but I don't know what that limit is or exactly what the nuance of that is, but I think that's generically correct, yeah.
Generically correct. I'll take that, yeah. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash sixty-seven, related to the issuance of conduit revenue bonds for purchase and rehab of the Mississippi View Apartments.
Second. Motion by Carlson, and I think I'm going to give that one to Novak. Is there a further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carried. That was nice, you, Councilmember Carlson, you could have tabled that, you know, after he flew in from Seattle, just.
I just want to say thank you to the council and the mayor for your consideration and approval.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, we are on to item nineteen, consider to approve and accept a permanent trail and snow storage easement between the city and Kurt and Mary Joy Becker at twenty-three twenty-four, one hundred twenty-first circle northwest. Mr. Brody?
Councilmembers, as you recall, we've had a discussion on this particular easement for several months, it's part of that Coon Creek Trail that runs from one hundred twenty-first over to the Becker property, and we've acquired or those easements across that necessary for that trail, and this is kind of the final piece, and so we did have a closed session a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago, where we discussed this particular easement, and more importantly, we discussed the cost, which was forty-five thousand dollars, is what we agreed upon. At that point, council seemed to have a consensus that that amount and for this easement was appropriate, so we're now here for official approval of the trail easement and the snow storage easement at one hundred twenty-first circle, twenty-three twenty-four, one hundred twenty-first circle, and then we have an MOU agreement with the Beckers as well, that we had asked authorization to enter into. Once we execute the deed and record it, we will pay the Beckers, and then that section will be complete, and we can turn it over to Mr. Hemmer and his department to further develop the trail, if that's council's direction, so we're asking you just to approve the easement tonight, and I stand for any questions.
Questions with Mr. Brody?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to accept the permanent easement from Kurt and Mary Joy Becker for the trail and snow storage easement at twenty-three twenty-four, one hundred twenty-first circle northwest, and authorize execution of the easement and the MOU with the Beckers.
Second. We have a motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I just felt I better just say a few things, I think everyone knows how I kind of feel about this so far, but, you know, to your point a little while ago, we've got a lot of big things going on in the city, we're going to borrow ten million dollars for a lot of infrastructure stuff, we've got a new fire station, we've got a new water tower, we've got sewer and water and infrastructure needs, in addition to forty-five parks and trails that we're already maintaining, I just don't think we need to acquire this property to put in another trail that'll go between residential backyards, in between a wetland and, you know, a commercial and a highway, when we've got trail connection that already goes down Main Street and Hanson. So I just, I do not, I do not favor purchasing this piece of property at this time.
Very good. Is there further discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
I have, I came into this discussion very late, and we've had a lot of talk about this particular project, and in particular, this particular purchase, and I am willing to go with the majority on this one, but I do just want to second Councilmember Griscoviac's misgivings on this, we are spending a lot of money, and this is the kind of thing where this is a, we want it, not that we have to have it, and, you know, the water tower, we have to have that. This, not necessarily, at least in my opinion, so.
Mr. Mayor?
So, Councilmember Carlson?
The way I look at it, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, as far as our discussion is to the trail and, you know, continuing a trail or adding a trail, that, to me, that's just further discussion, I think it's reasonable to acquire the property now, so in the future, if things are looking better, or we get some of these other things paid off, we'll have it ready to go. So I'm in favor of purchasing this property and having our discussion, you know, later on about the trail.
We need the property to even consider the trail, and the trail warrants a conversation because it was part of our park bond referendum, and we set the money aside for this trail, we've contracted it, we've edited it, we've made it a lot, cost a lot less, and I don't know if we can go back on our park bond referendum, because this trail was in there. The way I remember it, that was a long time ago now, so I really support paying the, or purchasing the easement, so at least we have the availability to put a trail in, you know, that can be a bigger conversation later, yeah. Is there further discussion on this? We have a motion and a second to accept the permanent easement. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries, one opposed, Councilmember Griscoviac. Item twenty is to consider the Thirteenth Amendment to Service Contract with Center for Energy and Environment and improve the home improvement loan budget, and it's wonderful to welcome Kristen back. Did you want to hit the highlights on this, or do you want me to hit your bullet points? Long as you're here, you know?
As a summary, as, you know, most of you know, the city has offered home improvement programs in the city for over twenty years to homeowners, also down payment assistance to home buyers, and we do have a contract with an outside organization, a nonprofit organization called the Center for Energy and Environment, and they do all the loan origination for us, since we don't have loan officers on staff at City Hall. So this contract that we're, that's before you tonight, or the amendment to the contract is adding more money into that contract, since we are nearly depleted right now. In fact, as the memo suggests, we do have more applications that are pending right now than what we have money left for, so it is proposed that an additional one point two million dollars go into the program, that was the dollar amount that was added last go-around, which was eighteen months ago, and we've gone through all of that, minus, you know, whatever is left of the two hundred thousand dollars that was in the account as of two weeks ago. So it's a very popular option, it is a combination of down payment assistance, low-interest loans, deferred loans for lower-income households that can't afford a monthly payment, it also includes. It also includes the emergency funding for people get, for instance, that have a furnace that goes out in the wintertime and they don't qualify for any of the other programs. Also, the financing piece, the Home for Generations program, which is, are those large value-added improvements to people's homes. So it is a combination of a lot of different programs, and like I said, obviously very widely used. You also may remember that last year, about six months ago, we went through a couple of discussions about changing the interest rates for the low interest loan because of market conditions and the fact that our interest rates were so much lower. So we did curb a little bit of that activity because 2022 was a very big year for the program. So the interest rates, you did approve those to go up by 1% last December. So now the interest rates of those loans are 2% and 4% instead of 1% and 3%, but I still do expect, and, you know, as of the first six months of the year so far, there is still a lot of activity. It's just, I don't think it'd be maybe quite as robust as 2022 was. But again, we are near depletion of the existing budget, so the program does need additional dollars. In addition to that, our administrator has let us know that starting on January 1 of 2024, there will be some adjustments in the administrative pricing. So I included that in at this time just to put it all under the same contract. So those changes won't be effective now. They'll be effective the first of the year.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Rand?
Your honor.
That was a serious look. I thought I was gonna get a question. Mostly you're just wondering about how Everett's doing, right? Yeah, all right. All right. Councilmember Rayrower, were you about to say something?
Yeah. I make a motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a 13th Amendment to the service contract, together with any necessary documents, with the Center for Energy and Environment that provides an additional $1,200,000 in funding allocated to the program loan funds and extension of the service contract to December 31, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? I get an email from a lender that was a forward from another lender, and they wanted to know if Coon Rapids was going to renew their DAP program. And I'm going, I've been in real estate 33 years, I have no idea what a DAP program is. Finally, I figured out they had the acronym switched around, down payment assistance. So, yikes. I feel like a fool. All right, any other, any further discussion? Every night, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are to the open mic public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address council for open mic? All right. Then let's get a, just a small thing to read. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Go ahead and approach the amp, give us your name and address and...
Shane Fields, I'm the commander of the Coon Rapids VFW post 9625, and I appreciate the time, and the mayor does know me because he thought I would speak more than I did earlier.
And now you get three minutes.
Now I get three minutes. I just wanted to give a high level overview of, they have a proposal at the state level to have ETabs adjusted, and I wanted to give a high level of it because I feel like even myself, I had to learn a little bit on it, even though I'm at the post, I understand a lot of it, and I've been to a lot of gambling meetings, and I didn't totally understand all the differences, and I think it's really important for Coon Rapids as a city to understand it because it affects the city dramatically. And what I mean by that is, last year as the VFW, we give 60% of our donations are required to be given inside of the trade area, most of them in Coon Rapids or touching Coon Rapids, the city touching it. We gave away a little over $178,000 in that area. Without the ETabs in there, that will eliminate $70,000 last year, is what would have been eliminated. We also give 5% to the city directly, and so that obviously, we, our calculations, it would eliminate, it would bring our charity down by 37% is what we're figuring. One of the questions people have always asked is they said, well, they're not really trying to get rid of them. Let me explain when they say they're not trying to get rid of them. What they're trying to say is that they're trying to get rid of the "all" button, is what they say. Well, the way that gambling works right now on an ETAB, charitable gambling, you take the tablet, our number one game is actually a fishing game, and you cast out there, you hit a button, and then you get a fish, okay? They would consider that "all" because it's too much like a video game. Well, they say it's, they don't want anything like a slot machine. Well, when I thought of slot machines, I thought, pull the handle. Just showed me I was old. And that's what you get. Today, the slot machines at a casino are video games. So what they're really talking about is that fish game would be eliminated. What we would be left with would be a, basically a paper tab that looks like a pull tab, and you have to swipe one by one by one. You see if you won, you hit a button, you move to the next one. Now, all of the video game versions of it are gone. That's going to, now, the reason that's super important is if you've ever been to a bar and if you've ever been to a, looked at people, what do they do? They grab a paper one, they pull all three of them at once, and they look at it. That's now eliminating that off of the table of being able to do it. They're not, from what I can understand, what they're trying to do is it's not really to try to make it a four process, four little swipes, it's to break the ETabs. As far as the revenue that we can get from it, it's to break it. The difference in being able to do that is if you think about that $70,000, last Monday, I had a kindergarten teacher from Coon Rapids Elementary School, she needed some money to be able to go take the kids to science, to the science museum. And we were able to get that thing, find out they needed the money, the check was to them the next day. We can move things, we can make things happen where nothing else in the system can do that. When somebody comes to us, and if we have a homeless vet local, we can literally write out a check immediately. Happened this winter, he was going to sleep in his car, it was going to be 10 below, and he needed a one week gap to be able to make it to his next paycheck. And we were able to put him up in a hotel, boom, done, over. Those are the kind of things that are eliminating from Coon Rapids and cutting our profitability to be able to give them those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to address council for open mic? Yes, sir.
I know earlier in the evening, some...
Could you give us your name and address, sir? Your name and address, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Harold Hedger, also known as Harry Hedger.
Okay.
11908 Silverrod.
Okay, thank you.
There was some discussion earlier regarding the Public Works Department, just to add to that. I've lived in a cul-de-sac in Coon Rapids for over 25 years. Every time we've had significant snow, in the years gone by, typically, a dump truck with a side blade would come around and sweep out, and then led to just about every driveway being plugged. This year was different, and my kudos to the drivers who did it. They used a large front end loader that had hydraulic arms on it. They piled up all the snow in the front yards, and that was fine with me because all of the driveways were cleared out. So kudos to the drivers that did that. Appreciate it. Second item I want to address, and that is taxes. And I'm sure you've heard some of this before. I was somewhat surprised when I saw what my taxes had done, my real estate taxes. Mine went up about 12.3% from last year to this year. And I came to the meeting here on December, I think it was 5th of last year, there was going to be a meeting to discuss taxes. I had a bunch of questions, and I was told before the beginning of the meeting that they weren't taking questions. So I met out in the hall with Rich Gruber, I believe, is the assessor, and presented him with the document that I had gotten from Anoka County, went over the figures with him. He explained as best as he could what was going on. And I'd like to give you some figures that we went over to determine what's going on with all of these increases. Of the 12.3%, okay, if I look at the three entities that are the primary producers of those numbers, namely county, the school district, and the city, of those, Anoka County counted for, of the increase now, 12.7% was from Anoka County. School district, 36.45%. City of Coon Rapids, 48%. Almost half of my tax increase was due to the city. And in breaking that further down to determine from 2002 to 2003, what did each of those three entities, what changed in those three entities? The, Anoka County increased their portion now, in other words, 2002 to 2003, increased The school district from 2002 to 2003 increased 12.7%. The city of Coon Rapids from 2002 to 2003 increased 17.2%. So by far, percentage-wise and in actual real dollars, the biggest hit came from Coon Rapids. And when I looked at that and went back and said, well, I just made out a check to Coon Rapids for $2,255, which was street improvements, okay? When I add that, and by the way, that I thought was kind of ironic, they were charging interest on that on a daily basis even before the work was completed. I'm not familiar with that type of accounting.
It took us a while to get used to it, too.
And then, in addition to that, here we get the letter on the, how was it quoted? It was a change in billing for water. It wasn't called an increase. So I took an old water bill, calculated it all out with what the units were, applied the new to it, guess what? Another increase.
Harry, are you getting close? I'm sorry, we're way over three minutes here. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Well, no, I just want to make sure you're getting it all out. I just wanted to...
Well, I'm concerned that as a retired fixed income person that went through all of the retirement planning, budgeting, and so forth, and suddenly, things are so out of whack, I'm a retired state employee, if you're wondering about cost of living increases in the pension plan, 1%. What are they for next year? 1.5% set by the legislature. Just when we've got all this money sitting there, being doled out, and talk of Social Security no longer being taxed, that has not gone through. Tax rebates coming back, that has not gone through, and that was all of 8 o'clock this morning per our governor. So anyway, all I'm asking for is when you sit with these budgets and figure out what's going to go where and who's going to pay for what, be aware that the percentage of this population in Coon Rapids is continuing to grow of retired people on fixed income.
Yes, sir.
We have to make some decisions of where we want to retire. With that, I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, thank you for getting on it. Thank you, Harry. Anybody else to address council for open mic? All right, we'll close that portion of the meeting. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business, updates and discussion on legislative matters, city projects, and policy topics of interest.
Mayor and council, I can start the conversation here. This was primarily intended to provide an opportunity on the agenda to discuss what was already brought up tonight, is sort of the e-gaming provisions that are being discussed that would certainly affect charitable gambling operations in the community, and I think the council's heard some of that feedback previously, but certainly here tonight about what those potential impacts are. I'm not super sophisticated in terms of how that would work operationally. I did reach out to a lobbyist that the city works with through the North Metro Mayors Association just to get his understanding of where that legislation was at, and he described it as being in the House omnibus bill that's been passed, but that the Senate is probably less apt to accept that language. So perhaps there's sort of a legislative fix to it. But I think the question that was at least posed to me is, is there some sort of effort the city might be interested in communicating to our legislators and perhaps beyond about what our position is? Given that was sort of a late request, I thought the best way to do that was to have that as an opportunity here tonight. Obviously, that could come in the form of some sort of motion for staff to create a letter and distribute that to our legislators, or if that's something we want to do, sort of as an organized effort, or if council's interested in doing that independently, obviously, that's at your discretion. So that's, I think, the primary push for why that was listed tonight. You know, there's a few other updates that we can touch on. Reality is, they're in the final stages of conference committees right now. It's anybody's guess, I think, in terms of a lot of these provisions. You know, I looked at a few things, and there's just not a lot of information out there right now about local government aid, about capital projects, and I'm getting some information that some of our projects may be in some of the bills, but maybe not, and, you know, we're tracking that as best we can. Certainly, there's a lot of potential in this session for some of the larger bills that have been or could be passed to impact us. We're watching closely to the, anything related to the elections. The housing bill passed through omnibus here just this last week, and I think is headed toward the governor's desk. It will have pretty big impacts across the state, including in the form of a new tax, but also in terms of the amount of resources that are available for housing projects. You name it, you know, whether it's paid parental leave, cannabis, a lot of things that are going to affect us organizationally, certainly out into the community as we think about those issues and what those policy implications are. So as the legislature is approaching that May 22 statutory deadline, we are watching closely, and we'll have to kind of sort things out after they're all done. But with that, I'll pause and welcome any conversation about any of those topics, but in particular, the charitable gambling piece.
Mr. Stanwold, and this almost would be a sidebar for us later, but North Metro Mayors meet tomorrow, and that's Wednesday, and you said they're going to wrap up Thursday?
The 22nd.
Oh, the 20, Thursday the 22nd.
There was some discussion, I believe, in the House side about trying to adjourn early. Apparently, the Senate is not interested in that.
Okay.
I think in the last 40 years, they've never adjourned early, so the likelihood of that happening is, I think, no, but...
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because that would make sense for us to have this conversation tomorrow night as well with the North Metro Mayors.
Sure, yes, I agree, yeah.
And get them on board because we are receiving a lot of pushback from our charitable gambling organizations. Even folks in the same party aren't agreed on it as our representatives. And two of the biggest supporters of, one of the folks that's sponsoring this, two of his biggest supporters this morning went, he's done. What's he doing? And I thought, oh, boy. So I don't know, I don't know why we're having this conversation. I don't know why this is in there. It's going to cost our gambling organizations and the city of Coon Rapids and our youth sports and everybody else tons of money. So, all right, I'm going to get off my soapbox now, Harry.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
I was first approached by the VFW on this topic, and it definitely caught my attention. As a recipient of some of the charities that have been in place in the city, my family going back to 1974, there have been times where we've needed to have that help, and it's always difficult to ask for help, and it's always so amazing when those groups are there to actually step up and provide that help. So this is something that is, again, very near and dear to my heart. So this is something that is, again, very near and dear to my heart. These numbers are really significant. When taking a look at the total amount, all told, Coon Rapids charities donated from this income source, a total of more than $1,394,500. And just using the rough estimate of a 36% decrease in that, you'd be looking at that number being only 920,370. That 5% fund received well over 800, I'm sorry, 88,500. These proposed changes would have made that only 59,000. Now, the sponsor of this particular bill is aware of this. I've made him aware of this. And the only comment I got back was that, well, we're offering tax refunds to try and take care of that. And so I was asked by the VFW to bring this up to the city council and request an actual letter on behalf of the council to the sponsor of this particular bill, asking him to pull it. And so I would just like to submit a draft of that to you.
All right. Mr. Stemwaddle, can you send this out to council tonight or tomorrow morning? And whoever wants to sign on to this or, or forward it to their legislators can do that? That would make sense, and they could, they could all sign it individually. We're certainly not going to take an action on it in other business.
Sure. Mayor and council, I think that, that would, I certainly can do that. And then if folks just want to let me know if they'd like their name attached to it or not, and we'll get it out as soon as we can.
Okay. Councilmember Novak, is that satisfactory?
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I'd like to just add to that, to Councilmember Novak's comments with our wonderful organizations like the VFW and all the other charitable organizations we have that help, you know, provide free and reduced cost activities for, you know, our, our families that are struggling, and for all the free activities, you know, and events that we're able to provide for citizens with this money. I just, yeah, I think anything that we can do to try to encourage our legislators to not sign on to this would be appreciated.
It shouldn't be lost on anyone that this, this money that you talk about that comes to the city that goes primarily to our Community Strength Foundation is used for, just as tonight, the concerts at the dam, our annual fireworks celebration, just all kinds of different activities around town. And, and that's only a percentage of, of the, of the money, the dollars that are left out for our residents and our youth and everybody else. So, yeah, I would just as soon say it go status quo and pull that. All right. Anybody else? Anything for other business? I had a, got an email from Congressman Phillips, and he wants to know if we have any interest. He just, he just returned from a congressional delegation trip to Israel and described how moved he was by the way in which Israelis celebrate their Memorial Day. He said that the sirens sounded at a certain time of the day and everyone stopped what they were doing to honor the lives that had been lost in conflict or due to terrorism. This is the part that makes me uncomfortable. He said people would even stop and get out of their cars while driving on the highway in order to observe a moment of reflection. That sounds dangerous to me, don't you think, Captain Steiner? He said that they have been discussing how we might be able to encourage this spirit for our Memorial Day, and they are wondering whether the CD3 mayors would be interested in sounding city alarms at 1:00 PM on Memorial Day. If so, they would work to publicize which cities are participating. And, and then of course Representative Phillips would love to participate in some way if possible. Do we have any interest in that? I mean, it sounds like a cool thing, but even on tornado watches or tornado test days, nobody seems to know why the sirens are going off anyway.
Mayor and council, you know, I would suggest it, it does become a challenge when those sirens go off. I know we have sort of that extra day a year where it's not on the regular cadence, and then we do get a lot of questions. This year, I think, put an extra effort into communicating that that was going to be the case on Severe Weather Awareness Week. And even then, I think people are kind of confused. So it may take a little more discussion than, than perhaps we could pull off here in the next couple of weeks, maybe as a buildup to next year, where we can put that in newsletters and online and so forth so that people are aware of it and that it's, otherwise the alarm will go off and the sirens will go off and nobody will know what to do. They just think it's odd or they look in the sky.
Get that car stopped in the middle of Hanson, standing out in the street, yeah.
I think it's an interesting, interesting proposal. And especially if that's something that could be done more statewide, I think people could get behind it. It's just going to be a little confusing from one community to the next and who's doing it and why they're doing it right now.
Your honor.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think long-term, that's a, that's a good conversation. Councilmember, Councilmember Novak?
Actually, I disagree. I think it's a fantastic idea.
Well, we didn't say it was a bad idea. We said we got two weeks to put it together, so.
If all we're doing is adding on Coon Rapids's name to something that might already happen and people don't know, they'll ask and they can find out. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Carlson?
I, I think it's a great sentiment. I think it's a great idea, but, but boy, you know, whenever our alarms go, you know, whenever sirens go, people get a little bit panicky, you know, I, heck, I'll run for the basement. You know, I, so I, you know, if you just, if you don't know, and I think at this stage it's so close, it'd be hard for people to know.
Fair enough.
And so I, I think it'd be, I think it's a great sentiment from Congressman Phillips, and I think it'd be great if we just could have a little bit more education before we do it next year.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Other business. Really? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Rayrower to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.